Okay, we'll call the Committee of the Whole for May 22 to order. I would like to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Record of attendance, I did get a note from the Deputy Mayor, he'll be here in a couple minutes. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? We're just trying to figure out if that's the case.
Hey.
You never know. Okay, any additions or deletions for the agenda, anyone? Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda? Okay, Councilor Lesser, seconded by Councilor Bouchere-Lacroix. Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, staff report, so the C.A.O. report, any questions for the C.A.O.? I do. What happens when I don't get a couple hours with you in the day? I'm just like, the first one here, the request for decision, the water rate study, does that have anything to do with what we've just done yesterday? Okay, I just didn't know how they bounce, they bounce back and forth. And, nope, nope. And then, so, we've already done the motion for Beacon Park Bandstand, we don't have to change anything there because it was still in the agenda, it was still on the budget, but we changed the budget, so we're still good. Okay, I just have to, it's just process. Okay, gotcha. And then, the town hall signage with the Mi'kmaq log go? It's just the second to the last one, maybe we can just, whatever our goal has, that's probably the easiest way to do it. Can we do that one? Yeah, yeah, I think they've got something up there, and then that'll be off your list. Okay, all right, and I know that the Deputy Mayor had sent us a note, I mean, he didn't put it on the agenda, but around the two accessible picnic tables, I think we need to, we need to, they would need to be checked by staff before we could say yes to that. So what are we looking for there? Oh, okay, all right, good. All right, that's my questions, any more, any questions for the C.A.O., anyone? We like green, yep. The fire department report, the chief's here, anything for the fire department? How you liking your new truck? We hope. You're very, you're very happy, and we're hoping that a big purchase like that never has to be used, that's terrible. Okay. Excellent. No questions for the chief, okay? Operational services, and Chad's here, anything, any questions for Chad? I got a question later on around the parking thing, but that's on the agenda as well. Go ahead, Councilor Cleveland.
You probably can't answer this anyway, but it's, and I apologize because sometimes you lose the threads, especially kind of the way things have been with me personally in the last while, but we had passed last fall to send to budget, and we just get through budget, the sidewalk on Huntington Street, if you may remember.
Oh, the extra, that halfway up there?
Yeah, and I apologize if it's been, if it's happened, like, it went to budget and I missed it somehow because there's been a lot going on, but is that still on the kind of agenda for this year or not? I had a constituent ask about it.
That would be a capital expenditure that I don't know if it made this year's list.
I don't think it made this year's list, and I'm going from memory, not from paper, and I don't know, I don't recall if it's in, if it's in the schedule, like, if it's slotted for next year, I don't know. I can't tell at the top, I wish Jerry was here.
I would really appreciate it if it could be, and I don't know if that requires a motion or just a note or what, but I, it's kind of my fault that I missed it in everything that was going on in terms of budget planning.
It was in the conversation, at least at staff level, I know we went through the things that were recommended, referred to budget. In the capital budget process, we were extremely tight.
I know.
And, and it may have been as a consequence of that, that it didn't, didn't make it this year, but let's, let's look at what the paper says.
Okay.
And go from there.
Good enough, thank you, thank you, sorry for that.
But then staff would still have to, staff still has to look and see what's the, what's the order of things.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Good, any more questions for Chad? Okay, good, thank you. Planning and economic development, and their lead is here, Natalie, any questions for Natalie? I do. Oh, go ahead, Councilor Lesser.
Thank you. Obviously, there's lots going on in town with building. My question's around unsightly properties and how fast the grass is growing. I've just, as we drive around, I'm seeing a lot of tall grass, and I'm thinking as people get off the boat, and I don't know at what point we interfere with that, or if letters can be given, or, I don't know the procedure, I guess, but I know in the past we've had properties that get mowed because they kind of got out of control, it just, it seems like there's quite a few this year that have grown quite high already without touching them, and I don't know if that's, yeah, I don't, I don't know the procedure of how that works.
How does that get turned on? Hang on, Natalie.
Press the button.
Yeah, just press the button in the middle, or some button. There you go.
Swanky.
Tell them. This is fancy stuff.
Yes, yes, swanky, that's the word.
Councilor Lesser, the grass growing season has just started, our bylaw officer is off this week, so I'm sure next week we'll be doing his regular route around. In the bylaw, it does identify the height that the grass can be, so I'm sure you'll see some action, and I think the, we'll probably have to review contractors that were in place last year and see if he needs to add any additional to that list.
And I realize the no-mow may push that's happened in the past, I know some people choose not to mow a May, it just, it just seems like grass is growing really fast this year, and it, there's quite a bit of high grass, so, I know it's nothing we can address at this point, but I'm just making sure it was on the radar, thank you.
Yeah, and Councilor Lesser and any other counselor, if you see something over in the next little while that you don't think is being addressed, please, please share it with us.
Thank you, Councilor Hatfield.
Oh, thank you, Your Worship, I just wanted, just, I wanted to reiterate the concept of the no-mow may because we've had a cold start to the season, and it, it, there really is a reason behind it, it is, it's to allow all of the insects and the burrowing animals an opportunity to get started in life after the dormant period in the winter, and by cleaning up your properties too early, you're decimating the populations, and those are our pollinators, and our, you know, I mean, there is an environmental reason for having an aesthetic that it is less than perfectly trimmed lawns, and I think we should not lose sight of the fact that community standards are changing and evolving as we recognize the role that green lawns have on the environment, and it's not necessarily a good one, so I wouldn't want people to be pressured into having an earlier start than necessary, and, and, you know, it isn't just aesthetics, it's also to protect the environment, thank you.
So maybe to cover both of those points, we'll just put something in comms, I think that would be a, a good thing to do, because there is a concern, and Councilor Lesser's not the only one in the community saying what's going on with the grass, like, it's, it's growing, but what Councilor Hatfield was sharing is important, like, I look at the, I don't think I have a lawn, I think I have dandelions, I have a garden, and, and it's hard because you want the bees especially, and so we'll get something on, and that'll cover everything, yeah. So the dangerous and unsightly, that was on, that was on my list as well, but just, and I don't know if you can even answer this right now, but the capacity for the dangerous, the dangerous part of that, so the inspections, is it, is there, is there a little bit of capacity there, I'll tell you why, I know it's only spring, but we have a lot, we have a lot of folks living in places that are below those standards, as, as we all know, and, and then what happens, I think council understands, but just, just to reiterate it, it gets reported to your office, your team goes out, they take a look, and they ask the landlord, or they say to the landlord, A, B, and C has to be done to bring it up to the standards, and then if it's not done, we take care of it, sort of.
So it's actually a two-step process. So if we get a complaint from a tenant, or we get a complaint on behalf of the tenant, we first immediately go and do a visit with the tenant. We will document what we found with images and the conversation, we look at that against the building code and our bylaw, we then immediately communicate with the property owner and/or the property manager, or both, and then we issue a minimum housing complaint file that identifies the issues that we found with the accompanying photos, and we provide a timeline. So in the situation where the minimum housing complaint relates to the safety, like, a door got busted and they can't close their door, or a window glass is allowing the weather to come in, if the landlord or property owner can't remedy that, that day, we will contact someone to do that work, and the building official has up to $1,500 to remedy that. So again, part of what that letter that goes out, it states what needs to be fixed with photo evidence, and it provides a timeline that the property owner slash property manager has to remedy that and the building official. Now, in some cases, it might move from minimum housing to unsightly and dangerous, so under the dangerous bylaw, the building official has the capability, if things are not remedied, again, within a reasonable timeline, and again, it depends on the type, whether it's safety, to, depending on the amount, it would come back to the C.A.O. and the council to remedy that situation, and then that gets added as, in both situations, as a lien. Or the worst case is the tenant, if it's insignificant situation, has to leave the unit, cannot be occupied.
Okay, and they, and they would have nowhere to go.
So, we have a housing navigator through shift, so we would always give them that list, the tenant, they can reach out to DCS if they're not already a client of DCS, which has a new name, also going to the housing navigator shift, they can offer some temporary funding to get them housed. So we do that referral by providing them, the tenant the information, and the tenant can contact the list of organizations that we provide them.
Okay. So, I'm gonna ask this last question, the tenancy board, so, because the biggest fear is if I report this, I know I've said it from the table before, but if I report this, my landlord's gonna put me out.
That is definitely something that has occurred, I'm gonna say in the last 10 years, like, about 10 years ago, we did a big SWAT, and, and the result of that is we got a huge reduction in complaints coming from tenants. What we try to do through the other agencies, because they're working with these tenants in their organizations, is they're well-versed in who they should speak to with regards to the tenancy. And so that organization, the provincial organizations, met with our local organizations to give them information, to inform their clients, and then obviously the clients can connect directly with them, but unfortunately, in our day-to-day work, we can only provide information, we don't coach or counsel.
No, and that's, that's fair, I just didn't know if you knew those, those regulations, because I don't, my, my biggest fear and the biggest reality is that folks are living in places they shouldn't live in, that should be fixed, but they're afraid to say anything because they're afraid they'll be put out, and I guess the question is, can somebody put them out, so, and I'll just go, I'll talk to tenancy to get the.
Yeah, I think it's very difficult to remove a tenant. But I think it is worth, just for your firsthand information, we actually had, at the Community Housing Forum, we had the person that does landlords, but I can connect you directly with the person on the tenancy one.
That would be, that would be great, thank you. Okay, Councilor Lesser.
Just, I started off by saying how, how, how well your department's doing, and then kind of turned it negative, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add, the stuff that you're doing in your department is, is incredible, and it's good for, it's good for Yarmouth, so, I didn't want to, I didn't want to focus on anything negative, and I know it's not, you're not the one not doing the work, but, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, we're very happy with what all, all staff do, so, thank you.
Councilor Hatfield.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Natalie, I wondered if you could just update us briefly on your impressions of the results of the housing forum, I see that you had some information about it in terms of statistical participation, but overall, what do you think it's left the community with, and, and are there plans to take this to, you know, do it again here, or to replicate this model throughout the province, just what are your, what is, what's the committee's impressions with regards to the forum?
I think overall, the participants, the speakers on the panels, the presenters, and those that were manning their organization at the booths felt that it was extremely successful for their participation, not only from a public facing, but also it allowed them to meet other partners as part of that ecosystem, and so they created some really good contacts, certainly for the town, it allowed us to engage and meet with some of those stakeholders. For the people coming to it, it was kind of interesting, that earlier session, as would be expected, it would be residents, certainly looked, they were older in tenure, and were, was thinking about, you know, what can I do to answer the call, whether it's home sharing, building a backyard suite, or just knowledge to share with somebody else or curious. And then the afternoon session, we had local, local small developers, and I spoke with a couple of them after the session, and then during the session, they said, do you know, I don't normally come to these things, but I always find out this little nugget of information that didn't register before. So I think for them actually meeting the provincial people that, that are a part of programming and services, I think was really critical, because before they're only meeting them through email, so having that meet you eye to eye, I think was really informative. We did get, oh, when is the next one, Natalie? I think, I think a next one really has to make sense with regards to, is it around renters? Is there some new programming coming out of federal government and provincial government that makes sense to bring these very important and busy people down to our area, because there's actually, during that same weekend after, there was one in Lunenburg, there was one in other parts of the province, so we're not the only one trying to, to, to do these housing educational initiatives. So I think the next one, if council would be supportive, would have to be around what has shifted, what has changed, and who's the target audience.
Good, any more questions? Thank you.
Oh, and I hope you're enjoying those window murals.
Oh, my goodness. They really are. Like, and now she's doing the, I thought it was done just with the blue, and now she's adding the sun and the sunset.
I think that is, like, honestly, I've been waiting for us to do something that really, can I use the word iconic?
Excellent. We might need one. Okay, we good? Don't be making me laugh. Always Jeff. Engineering, and DiMario's not here, but you can reach out to DiMario, Jerry's here for finance. Any questions?
What have you been doing with all your time, Jerry?
Jerry, I think we're good. Go ahead, Deputy.
Not a question, just a thank you, we spent a lot of time in the last little bit going over budget, and I can honestly say that's not my strong suit, but the way you break things down and give us options is very much appreciated, and thank you for you and your crew for your work, and I think we came to a good consensus after being given proper information, so thank you for that.
I second that, because I, I'm not the best at budgets, but I learned a lot, I found like I, I learned and I dug, and, so that's really good. Okay, Yarmouth Recreation, Frank's here, come on down.
I was, I was bad, I apologize, I didn't get a report in for this meeting, so I wanted to verbally give a couple updates to council. First off, Volunteer of the Year, so I sent a note around, and we did get some votes in, so thank you to those who have voted, to those that I haven't got votes from, deadline is Wednesday, next week, and I have to have everything in to the province on Friday. So even if you don't get it to me by Wednesday, we have time, I'll get in touch with you. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention was Canada Day, and traditionally, council assists with the Canada Day breakfast, pancakes and sausage, and I'm hoping that the Deputy Mayor can rally the troops to do a couple hundred breakfasts again on Canada Day.
Guess he said yes.
And other than that, we're getting ready for summer, getting staff in place, and registration's coming in, and fields are busy, and grass is getting cut, and we hosted the Acadian Games over the weekend at a bunch of different venues, over 800 athletes for pickleball, volleyball, baking, ultimate frisbee, mountain biking, so it was a busy weekend, but everything went off well.
Excellent, all those, the participants, but then the families.
Restaurant, if, yeah, if people were out trying to get a coffee or get into a restaurant, it was busy.
Nothing better than a lineup, I love lineups, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Councilor Hatfield.
Yeah, no, I just wanted, so the track and field, the new track and field at Paramba School, was that used as well?
Yes, yes it was, yep, I think, I think Jeff's wife was in charge of all the Acadian Games, track and field events, so.
Wow.
It was another busy site as well.
And, and it performed, obviously, well, what a great asset.
I heard nothing but, but glowing.
Wonderful.
And I guess just a couple days before the year was the tri-counties regional track meet as well, so it was, there was like four solid days of track, so it was, it was busy.
Great, good to hear, thank you.
Good, all right, thank you. Okay, business, okay, grants policy, and the recommended motion there is to recommend that council review the grants policy, but the recommended motion, should that be, is that how we're gonna do that? Like, how, how are we gonna go vote that?
We'll put that on an agenda this summer, and we'll try to be creative, to give you every opportunity to speak, debate, decide, and approve the policy, but what would be helpful over the next week or so, is if you, because we've just gone through it, you've just experienced the pain, if you can send notes to Lindsay, just to kind of highlight the things that you would like to have as part of the discussion, or things that caused you some pain during that process, and that can kind of help us to help you to review, to review the policy.
Just had a, yeah, I had a quick chat with Lindsay, and, and I like that clicker thing, you know, the, what do you call it? Yeah, the, mentee, the mentee meter, yeah, and, and then you get to say whatever you want to say without, you know, but then, then still the full discussion, so those questions, any, any questions that you have, or anything you want there, just send it to Lindsay, Lindsay, would you, you want to send out a reminder? And then should we do it in, should we do it on one of those pieces of paper? I'm so not technical. You know how you can just add to it, so, so the Deputy Mayor might say A, B, C, and then I'm not adding A, B, C because it's already there?
Yeah, no, just, just write an email, just individually, if you want to just sit, take a few minutes, take five minutes, just reflect on the experience, both the tax grants and the operational grants, and anything at all, things that occurred to you during the process that you think would be improvements, or maybe you don't know the answer to how to fix it, but you know it caused you some pain, just flag it, and we'll collect all that from all of you independently, and, and we'll try and facilitate a discussion that leads us to a better policy and process.
Good stuff, go ahead, Deputy.
Could you forward us the actual form that people have to fill out as well? I'd just like to know the questions that are asked on there, thank you.
And we can redo that, too, like, that's important, yeah. Did you have your light on, your question got answered?
Yeah, I was gonna actually mention the mentee meter as well, that was a great activity we've done in the past, and I think we, it helps come to a good decision, so, I think that's a great, great minds thing alike, I guess.
It is, it's fun, Jerry, you can do the mentee meter next year for, for budget. Okay, so that's good, so we don't have to do anything with that. Okay, counselor appointments to committee policy, so the motion there is to recommend that council direct staff for a report on how councils appoint council members to committees and boards, so do you need anything besides that? Yep, moved, seconded, you need to move and seconded, you don't, because it doesn't matter, okay, go ahead, because I, I do have, I sent a note out to about a couple of issues, and one of them was grants to. was grants to most of the mayors in the province, and I, I just said, "How do you do grants to organizations?" So I've got that list, and I can send that to you and send it to council so everybody sees how that's, how everybody else is doing it, but it's maybe a shortcut for you. And I've got a bunch of policies, I just looked up there, I said, "Send your policy." Seven policies.
So the, the motion is regarding how council appoints its own members to committees and boards, so are you, did you just say that you have that information from other mayors, or were you using that as an example of where we might get the information you're asking for?
Yeah, I'm, I just asked some of the ma, I just, it's, it's an example, like, it's not all-inclusive, I don't think.
No, you said you collected information on grants.
Oh, on grants, no, on, sorry, on committees.
Okay.
My apologies. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, no, you probably did hear that. Okay, we good? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, RFP results. So the recommended motion there is to recommend that council award the request for proposals for an open-air pavilion at South Playground to Gary and Construction for $68,275 plus HST. Do I have a motion? Deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Dares. Go ahead, councillor.
So I'm in favor of the motion, obviously, but we had previously, I think in the last council, had committed from the open spaces account, $80,000 towards work in the park, and that was actually a figure that I came up with just quickly in my head, because I was sort of adding up what I thought could be done there, based on the preliminary results of the study. Now that I can see that this is chewing up the majority of those funds, that commitment, I've asked staff, and this, this lady beside me is really efficient, I asked at the start of the meeting, how much money we had left in the open air, open spaces account, and I've been told as of about 10 seconds ago that it's $67,000. So we have $67,000 sitting in an account that has been there for some years, that is earmarked for improvements to playgrounds and open spaces. And I'm wondering about the, the practicality of actually adding more than, going beyond the $80,000 which was previously committed, to allow staff to do the work that needs to be done in that playground, because it's long overdue. That is a centerpiece of the town. It's used, well, it was used a lot more 30 years ago, I can tell you, but it's still used quite regularly, and it could be used a lot more and be a lot more comfortable if there were more amenities and more things done to the park. So I'd like to get an idea from, I'd like to, once this motion is voted on, I'd like to get a, an idea from our public works manager as to even a rough estimate of what it would take to do the rest of the work that's required.
Do we have a list? Do we have a list on that? Okay.
We did.
All right, so we can.
Vote on the motion.
Do that, yeah. Okay, so go ahead, deputy.
My only question is timeline. Will this come in, into play for Canada Day? There's hopes that it could be done before that, I'm sure, but just wondering.
Unfortunately not, no. I think the timeline that Gary proposed was finished up by July 17th, providing they got a quick yes on their proposal. So it's probably going to be a four to five-week construction phase.
Counting, counting weeks. We did that today. Oh, okay. All right. Okay, so we good to vote? Any more questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So we're good to go on that one? Do you want to?
So first, I'd like to hear from, from Chad as to what he anticipates would be required to do the rest of the work.
Well, I think if you recall a memo from earlier this year, after that community workshop, we identified the three, the three most popular items, I think that the group identified, was an open-air pavilion, more seating at, at the park, and removal of the mound. Now, as you can tell from, from my memo, I have no idea what things cost these days. I, I thought the pavilion would top out at $60,000, and as you can see, it's going to be almost $80,000 with HST. So the two other items, the removal of the mound, I think we can do that in-house to save some cost, and redistribute the material from the mound within the playground. We have some, some low areas of depression in the, in the playground. I think the old sand pit. So, so we can do a lot of that to save costs. I think we've taken some of the, I think we recently purchased six picnic tables that we can distribute through the park. But that only addresses the three most popular items, right? There was other items on the list that didn't make it for, for this season, so if council wishes to continue to, to fund this, we'll have to look at the next few items on the list. I can come up with a cost analysis, and then you can make some informed choices on, on what other assets you're willing to, to fund for the, for the park. But there's some, there's some high, high-priced items on the wish list. For instance, public washrooms. That's a very high-priced item.
Hundred thousand, at least, if we get what we want, because we're so self-conscious.
Something self-contained, something vandal-proof, yeah, you're, you're, you're in the ballpark, yeah, yeah.
And that was a hundred thousand a couple of years ago, we looked at those. Two hundred thousand, at least. Or we could plant a big tree, I don't know. Are you good?
Yeah, so long as we can revisit this at a future meeting, thank you.
Yeah, so should we, do we need to tell or ask Chad? We can get that list, and then you can start.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can, I can distribute the rest of the list and give you some very high-level cost estimates.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Thank you, that's what I'm interested in.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so does now. Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed last time I was down there, there was some chipping away of the cement in the skate park itself, so I'm wondering if we could do an assessment, just so we know what costs would be, just seems to be on the edges, and I think with frost and stuff, it might continue to chip away safely, more than anything. So, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. With regards to the playground, the capital costs are something, obviously, that I'm interested in, but I'm also interested in, I think that they should be guided. I think our decisions about what we spend should be guided by a discussion about what do we want the playground, how do we want the playground to service the community? Do we want it as just a passive place for people to come with their kids? Or do we want to, or do we want to integrate the playground as a critical element of our recreation plan? And, and think of it in terms of a space for programmed activity. So until we make that decision, and until the recreation committee is on board with that decision, whatever it is, and we, we, you know, once we get our recreation plan, our culture, recreation and parks plan in, I think that it should be part of that discussion going forward as to, you know, we can't do everything, so let's make sure that what we do is consistent with what we want.
Yeah, so my, and my head's going when you're, when you're saying that, we'll vote on this motion first, and then what councillor Dares was saying about the allocation of funds, maybe we can rework a motion that says in concert with. Now, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean we can't do it any way we want, but we are doing a plan, and we want it to function.
Right, yep, three top things.
You need your mic on. Yeah, oh, okay. All right. Okay, so what motion are we voting on? Hmm? The other report with the cost, I was just checking to see if you're all paying attention. Okay? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, okay? And thanks, Chad. And councillor Dares, did you want to do a motion around? Yeah, the reserve, and perhaps, I mean, I'm just saying, we can discuss it, but, but the next steps in, in about, you know, in concert with.
I don't disagree that, you know, that they, there's going to be value with the report that we received from the consultant, however, we did hold a public information or public participation session. We did gauge the necessity for some of the improvements in the short term. I don't think that those are going to be exclusive.
Yeah.
Of what the report will say, but for instance, I, I think the stage area was in jeopardy at one point, and, yeah, so.
Is that a, oh, okay.
And that was a fairly, I guess, highly-used part of the infrastructure. So I think the things that we heard when we attended the, the session in, in South End at the, at the school should be taken into account, and we should be considering those. I, I don't think it's going to interfere with what we do in the future.
Yeah, okay. So you want to make your motion?
Not sure what the motion would say, actually, now I'm to.
So the councillor had referred to the Parks and Open Space Reserve, and whether or not we could, we could expand what we're doing at the park by, by using that reserve, but it might be prudent just to wait until we have the report back from the manager of public works.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And so we just hold that thought.
Oh, sure.
For, for another meeting.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, good. All right, I heard you, grants. Okay, grants to organizations, 2025, to, and the recommended motion is to recommend that council approve the grants to organizations for 2025 as presented. Councillor Cleveland, seconded by councillor Bichere-Lacroix. Any discussion on this? Go ahead, there, deputy.
Not an easy process for us. We all bring a little bit of our own personal background to the table. I believe we have over 100,000 or so in requests, and only 38 or so to give out, so the number that we give is, you know, what we have. It's not a reflection of you ask for five, we only give you 500. We, we have to spread it around, we try to do the best we can, and we certainly appreciate everything that a lot of these organizations do to make our communities better, but it is, you know, a lesson in budgeting and, and trying to be fair to everybody.
Thank you. Councillor Hatfield?
Thank you, your worship. I just did a little back of the napkin, you know, kind of computing when I was going through the final numbers, and I found it really interesting to see how broad the values of the community are represented in the allocation. So, you know, mental health and food security basically got around the same amount of money, I mean, different groups, some group, you know, but, but in total. Sports, about $3,400, the arts, about $4,000. The vast majority of the money went to festivals that bring a lot of people into the community, so I think that that's a recognition that we appreciate and want to support the value of, of the volunteer base that are making those things possible, because we don't do them ourselves. So, you know, Sea Fest, the Roaring Twenties, Car Show, even the Ultramarine, which is a new music festival that is coming up in June, received, you know, funding. So, yeah, just, just an observation that there's, there's a lot of groups, I think there were 32 groups that looked for grant funding, and it's a very, I think all of us take that process very seriously, and, and we struggle to try to balance all of the different needs, and, and here we, each individually, without knowing what other people are doing, have come up with a fairly balanced representation of, of the community. So just wanted to make that observation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, did we vote? Thank you for keeping track of me. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And then the tax grants, to recommend that council approve the amended list of tax grants for 2025. That motion, deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Cleveland. Discussion? All those in favor? Oh.
I just wanted to, again, you know, I looked at the tax grants, and we originally had a budget of about $200,000, and we've come in, you know, $50,000 under that, and I think that it's important to acknowledge the struggles that we had as a council this year, working with the finance director to reach a balanced budget, and that, I think that, that it's reflected in what these totals are at the end of the day, that, you know, we didn't spend quite as much as was originally allocated, but it's a, it's a reflection of just how tight the budget is, and how hard we had to work to try to find areas so we could balance it. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Feeding wild animals bylaw amendment, to recommend that council amend the feeding of wild animals bylaws recommended by staff. Moved? Seconded? Discussion? Go ahead, councillor.
All right, I've had, had lots of complaints, lots, lots of constituents, and it covers pretty much everything that I, others have reached out to me complaining about, which is good, but I have one problem with it, and I might even have missed it somewhere, but I've read it three or four times to try to make it clear. So perhaps you could help me with it. We have a park. We have the, the Wetlands Park on Broadbrook. There are ducks there. There's lots of ducks there. It is a habit, and it's not just me, but I, but plenty of people are bringing their kids down there, they are feeding the ducks. Is that now illegal? Because I can't see anything about it, it's public land, ducks are not mentioned in this.
They're a wild animal.
Well, yeah. It's also a great spot to be down there, and it shouldn't be illegal to feed the ducks. Sorry. And I won't support it otherwise, I'll tell you that.
Okay, so he wants to know if that's in there? I think I just, it's, they're wild animals.
So I see Natalie has her hand up, so I'll defer to her, but I do recall, and I, I have to confess, I don't recall in my, in my recent memory, but there used to be a sign down in Milton at the park there, a no-feeding-the-duck sign, because feeding the ducks was a habit, and one much enjoyed, but not necessarily a good idea. So I defer to Natalie now that she's at the microphone.
You got to put your light on.
Sorry, habit. I've just conferred with our director of operations, and he doesn't believe that there's signage at Broadbrook to say prohibiting feeding of wild animals, ducks, et cetera, so we'll investigate that.
Okay. If we have a bylaw, do we have to put a sign up for every bylaw? But I mean, you can put it in the park, I'm just saying, right?
I think we should be consistent.
Yeah.
If it's not there, then.
Yeah.
But this is, you know, for private residents.
Yeah.
I'm going to keep my powder dry, because I, I can't answer that question with 100% certainty, so I'll hold. So this is a bylaw amendment. It's here for information. This, this wouldn't be considered first reading. This is, this is for information, so if you have, that question is a good one, obviously, stumped us, so if there are other questions, concerns, let's talk about them now, and that will help us to get it maybe more right or better, more accurate, to what your wish might be. Uh, and. more accurate to what your wish might be and time for the council meeting.
Go ahead.
I'm torn on this one because I understand that, you know, families enjoy going down and feeding the birds and the geese and that sort of thing. One of the issues that, that is fairly obvious to me is that, you know, it's okay to feed geese and ducks wild corn. It's not okay to give them bread. It's not good for them. And that's what people notoriously provide as food. There's ample food in the Wetlands Park for the ducks. I mean, they feed from the bottom. And the other problem is, is that excess feeding also results in excess excrement, which fouls the water. No pun intended. But I know that was a problem in the Dunerby, where the Sealed Landers Park area is that it was so close to, it was in close proximity to the swimming area and that the bacterial count was considered too high. I, I'm not sure there's a way around it because I honestly watched, I've walked through that park on numerous occasions and saw people feeding the ducks and then, you know, with their kids and thought, what a great activity. And on the other hand, and I would like to acknowledge that kudos to, to our bylaw enforcement officer for bringing to our attention the deficiencies in the, in the bylaw. And to staff for the, the work they've done to create these amendments that are, I think are all good. Gosh, I wish there was a way around the duck thing. I honestly do. But I guess if it's only for, not for first, if not considered first reading, I'll be voting in favor.
Hey councillor Bell?
Oh, thank you, your worship. This is probably much less controversial. I'm just looking at section four A, where it says feeding of songbirds and bird feeders on private property where the property owner has permission. And I'm just wondering, who do they get permission from? And maybe, I think I know, I think I know what the intent is, but I'm just, like, you don't have to get permission from anybody to feed songbirds, right? Like it's a right, you can do that. So who, are you talking about rental situations, renters?
Yeah, I think that's the thing.
So maybe we could just find a way to word that a little more precisely because I'm, the question that I ask is, well, who does the property owner need permission from? So we don't want to, we don't want to set that up in the bylaw. So it's just, it's just a wordsmith thing, I think. Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Good. Councillor Cleveland?
I just wanted to point out too, and then going back to the waterfowl bit, that there are signs up in Broadbrook Park specifying not to feed ducks any bread. You know, there are, there are ways, again, if, if it's no, it's no. But just to point out the fact that the encouragement is to feed them, you know, corn and those kinds of things as opposed to bread. So those signs do exist.
Okay, so I didn't, I mean, I, I'm obviously okay with, I'm, I'm just going to say this, like, it's, I get it. It's a great activity. I didn't know about the no signs with the bread, with, you know, don't, don't feed with the bread. I guess I, I guess I wouldn't care if it was corn or something like that. But then, you know what, people love to feed the deer too for their kids off the back steps. And we've got, we've got notices to people that actually have spaces set up on their property close to us. Right? Where they can, where they just, that's what they do. And, and their kids and grandchildren and they feed the deer from the back of the house and we know what that's done. So there's a reason, reason for the rules. But I'm, I mean, I'm good either way with the, with the corn, but I don't know.
So I have a little bit of information.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Google. So ducks are not songbirds. They are not of the off-seen division. They are of the and seriforms? Ducks, geese, swans and screamers. So they would not be exempted under the current version of the bylaw for people to be able to feed. So they would be considered with, with all other wild animals. And so no feeding the ducks by that bylaw.
All right, so that's where we are now. Anyone else? Go ahead deputy.
So we're voting on the motion as it's written?
Yep.
Not with any of the amendments, amendments added to it?
No.
That will come up, that will be added for first reading?
Oh, wait a minute now. Hang on one second. Is Bell's, for his question, is Bell's change? Just declare, it was just a clarification.
Will those amendments be added to this before first reading?
Maybe let's document amendments we want made.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Has permission of the owner or occupant? Occupant? That doesn't cover it?
Yeah, just, just, I, I think, if I may, if all you would have to do, I think, is to say where the property owner has given permission in section four, where the property owner has given permission. Rather than has obtained or has permission, has, has given permission. I think that would do it.
Hang on one second. Wait, one second. No person shall feed. Following feeding requirements met by the person. The person has the permission of the owner or occupant of the property. Like three point four A.
Yeah.
That doesn't contradict what you're, okay.
I just want to make it clear that the owner doesn't have to get permission from the town.
Oh.
That's all. Because right now, the owner has to get permission. And I'm asking from who? And they don't have to get permission, they need to give permission. Yeah.
Okay, good, all right.
So I would make that, I would amend the bylaw to say in four point zero, under exemptions A, that feeding of songbirds and bird feeders on private property where the property owner has given permission to do so and in accordance with this bylaw.
Good with that? Okay, have a second here? Okay. All those in favor? Oh, yeah, so is there any more discussion on any of this? Because we're going to vote on any amendments first. Hmm? There's only one though. Well, that's what I'm saying. Is there anybody else? Right now, there's only one. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment? Aye? Opposed? Okay, and then the entirety with the amendment in it? Or any other amendments? Thank you, Jeffrey. No? Why is it a question? Well, if, if, what we're saying is, tell me if I'm wrong. What we're saying is if he, if we want to feed ducks, then you got to make an amendment. Because it's not in there. Right now, we can't.
I'm not supporting it otherwise, but if, I just assumed by the way everyone was talking that you weren't going to support it, period. And so I was just going to vote the whole thing down. That's my plan.
Yeah.
I'm going to oppose the amendment, so. I mean, if you want to make an amendment to make it legal to feed ducks, but even if it were on public property perhaps, because I'm more concerned with what's going on within public parks. Public parks are places where, you know, families get together. I've got a grandkid who, every time she comes from Bridgewater, comes here to go to the park to feed the ducks. I'm not going to support anything that makes that illegal. So do you want to make an, I can make the motion that, you know, we amend it so that feeding ducks on public or private property, either way you want to word it, is, is, is legal or permitted within this bylaw.
Whatever, whatever most, whatever motion you want to make. And if it gets seconded and then we can discuss that amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make that a motion. But it's legal to, that we make it legal to feed ducks specifically or other wild animals within, or other wild birds. I don't even know how to word that properly. Just say ducks, ducks it is. Make it legal to feed ducks on public property. Because that's public, is it not?
One second.
Okay.
Okay, so discussion?
So I think we need to really impress upon people though that feeding ducks does not include bread products and things like that, that it be specific to something that's not, something that's going to affect, I mean, bread, bread affects their health. And so that's, that's not being helpful at all, that's being cruel. So I wonder if we can just say that it had be limited to a specific type of feed.
Sorry. Yeah, I, I don't know what, how to describe that. Corn or what, what you do. But not.
So we can, sorry, jump in, but
Yep.
if, if the intent is to exempt ducks from the prohibition of feeding wild animals, we get that idea. And if it is to do so only with appropriate feed, we can do, we can do a little bit of research on that. Because I don't know off the top of my head and I don't, it doesn't sound like anybody else has confidence to, to define it. So leave that with us. And we've got a couple of weeks before the council meeting. And we can, we can send it back to staff to put words around that if the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Lesser?
I just wanted to say, I feel so out of my element here. I don't, I, I have no idea. Like, this is, out of five years, it's probably the most difficult decision I'm making. I don't, which seems bizarre, but I, I don't really know. Like, I don't know the good, the good and bad of feeding ducks and what you feed them and I mean, I, I love seeing people feeding ducks, but I don't, I have no idea if it's good or not. So I don't really know, I don't know how to, how to vote, to be honest, but anyway, I just wanted to say I'm, I feel quite out of my element.
Councillor Hatfield?
Thank you, worship. I think that I would be more comfortable if staff also looked at best practices. These are wild animals. And I'm sure natural resources or someone within the province, you know, someone within the province, they're migratory birds, they're wild animals. And I'd like to know whether encouraging people to feed ducks is in their best interests as wild animals or in the best interests of the ec, of the ecology. Because if you, if, if the birds overpopulate because they are getting too much to eat, and that's what will happen when they get fed artificially, they have more babies. And is that good for the environment? So I just, I just would be more comfortable making a decision knowing what best practice is. Thank you.
Okay, I, and I appreciate what, what you're saying and where you're coming from. I can't support it because it's a wild animal. We, not that we don't ever change direction, but I, I would suggest, and we can check into it, but I would suggest staff has already done that. I don't think staff says, let's not feed the ducks. Or let's feed the ducks or not feed the ducks without having done all that work before. But I have no problem checking into it. And there's a reason there's a, that's sealed landers, right? It's, it's just, never mind the excrement everywhere, but in the water there, there's issues, like, there's just, there's issues and they're, they're wild animals. So, I mean, I appreciate what everyone's saying. I'm just, I, I may be the one, the one no vote, but I'm not going to teach kids to for our own, our own purposes, teach the children maybe to respect the animals, watch the animals and not feed them. But that's just me. So that's where I am. Okay, anybody else? So, okay. Go ahead councillor.
Hi. I'm just thinking there's a lot of moving pieces to this and a lot of variables and maybe we have that information and maybe we don't. And I think that's important. So it would be things like, how many people are feeding the ducks? And if this is amended, will that increase the number of people that feed the ducks? Because the truth is, I can only speak for myself, but regardless of what's in that document, I wouldn't have known as a citizen how many people are feeding the ducks. Yes, they're, they're waterfowl food that's not going to pollute. Like, things like, if we increase it, how much does a population increase? Because those are all real, real concerns, right? But I wouldn't vote, I wouldn't vote in favor of this based on all of our opinions around it. I want some, I want some science behind it, some information. And if staff has already done the background information prior to this, then it would be nice to see those documents and how they came upon that information. I guess.
Hmm? Can we table it now? Is that legal? Get more information? Greg, can we?
Sure.
We can do whatever we want. Do I need a table to, so councillor Daers asked to table it. Do I need a motion to table? Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Or discussion, did you have a? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So we'll get that information in. You know, it, how many times, it's been said a thousand times. You can, you can spend five million dollars in thirty seconds and spend six hours talking about a hundred dollars feeding ducks. It's all good though.
So you may find this interesting. You might not. So I did a quick Google, Nova Scotia Natural Resources feeding ducks, and this is what comes up. AI generated.
All right.
In Nova Scotia, it's generally not recommended to feed ducks or other wildlife, even in areas like Yarmouth, Nova Scotia. Just saying. They're listening.
No, that's, that is funny. Okay, so the next area is parking restrictions on Main Street. So I'll have a question for you Chad. So the, the letter is there. Obviously, we've had a ton of issues there. So they will install signs. So I was going to say that. Say it right. Some people don't read signs. I don't know how else to say it diplomatically. Oh, that's a sign, whatever. So, and I'm just asking this, is, are those yellow lines helpful too? You know, where you put the triangle? I don't know. If you're parking behind, anywhere behind it, then it gives the RCMP and, and a marker. I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm not saying the yellow signs wouldn't be helpful. I think the signs are enough. And sorry, I should have mentioned in the, in the memo, those aren't arbitrary numbers. Those, those setbacks are from the Motor Vehicle Act.
Oh, definitely.
Regulations under the Motor Vehicle Act. No, I, I think signs in this case will work. But for the record, the signs aren't required in order for the bylaw enforcement officer to, to enforce the, the act. But I think, you know, we've been kicking this one around for a year now, so I think the signs are the next best step.
Okay, that works. I, I just had to ask because I've said it before and I, I haven't been very respectful about it. But if you're parking in, like, a foot from the curb or in front of a fire hydrant, like, do you, do you need, like, what else do you need to say this is wrong? But they did, people just don't listen.
Yeah.
So we spend time and money because people have no common So we spend time and money because people have no common sense. It can't even, can't even, I know, I'm saying it really blunt, but I can't help it. It's, it's awful, like, the, the time spent on just trying to police, like, the, the easiest thing. So I just thought, there's the line, don't cross that line, you can get a ticket. So the, some, the same thing, right?
Yeah, another thing with lines, if you've noticed throughout the town, except for crosswalk markings, we generally don't paint.
Yeah.
Street markings outside of the downtown core.
That's right. Yeah, good. Perfect answer. Go ahead, deputy, you're going to calm down what I just said.
No, actually, just maybe getting a little dig in, but maybe in the future, when we, when we do develop an agreement or whatnot, we consider parking, like on Argyle Street.
Parking, parking legally, you mean? Okay. So we're good on this one? What do we need for this one? This is just information, right? You're doing this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Any more questions for Chad? All right. And then HAF, Affordable Housing Grant Program Policy Discussion.
So for discussion, this is one of the five strategic initiatives as per the Housing Action Plan. And so in front of you for discussion is just an outline of what this grant policy could look like, and I'm looking for your input. So the goal is to incentivize affordable housing creation in fully serviced areas. So I guess before I go on with this, do you have any questions, comments, reflections?
I'm not quite, what are you asking us to do? Like, I, I mean, I read it, but we have $2.3 million, and this is step one, or like, one part of the five, of the five.
Right, so we've, so with regards to incentive funding, we had identified around $650,000 that would go towards incentive programs. So one of the programs I'm identifying today is to develop a grant program policy that would allow the disbursement of funds to eligible developers. And so they're broken down into two streams. One is for missing middle affordable housing, so that's anything greater than five units, could be a townhouse, a row house, an apartment building, less than four stories. So we're aligning that one with the CMHC and the Growth and Development Affordable Housing Fund, because we want to be able to leverage our developers or applicants to provide us with that agreement, identifying the affordable units that this, they can apply to this grant, to apply to that. The second stream is called the revitalization substream, and that is to, to incentivize nonprofit developers and for-profit developers to utilize buildings that we can, that they can convert for long-term residential units, and that could also be vacant properties. And again, the minimum requirement is five units, again, to align with programs that already exist within the federal and provincial agencies. Included in the missing middle is what we call ADU, and I apologize for not pulling, putting the full, that's accessory dwelling unit, or you might know it as a backyard unit. And so the provincial growth and development has a backyard suite grant program, so that would allow us to be aligned with that. So essentially, it's to incentivize and, and allow those developers to utilize some additional funding to help them move forward with their programs.
Okay. AHANZ, provincial entity?
It is a not-for-profit organization. It is not solid line to the province.
Okay, that's what I want to know. So they're not pro, for profit, but there's, Shaw Avenue was taxed, right?
I'm sorry?
Is Shaw Avenue taxed?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay. Counselor Lesser, go while I rethink this. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I know this isn't really for this, but if somebody has a backyard building at this point, but it doesn't have, like, it has electricity and it's, you know, insulated and stuff, but doesn't have plumbing, for example, are there, and I, I know it doesn't necessarily pertain to the housing accelerator, but are, is there money available to transform those? Because I think there are a lot of buildings in people's backyards that, for not a lot of money, they might be able to make it into a living space.
The answer is yes, but it needs to be qualified by the grant caseworker at the provincial level, and also by our building code. Does it have the right foundation? Is the structure sound? So I think it's, um, it's an answer that could be answered by both of those parties, but there is funding if you meet all the eligibility criteria.
And so if somebody was in that situation, I just know of somebody who's in that situation, and I asked, what are you doing with the building in the back? It looked like it was livable, but they said there's no plumbing. So who would, who, who should I direct them to to see about the possibility of finding funding?
So number one, I would suggest, is they can go to the town's housing resource site, and it has links for that secondary backyard suite program that will take them right to the provincial site, and then they, they have information, it's a really easy read, and they have the application, the FAQs, everything. So I would suggest that in parallel, I think it's really important, they contact the planning office to speak with the, to just run through it with the development officer to make sure it meets all of the bylaw requirements, and then at least they'll get both pieces of information, one around funding and one around the land use bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Okay. So we're vote to accept it. Are we, it's a policy discussion, but are, what would you like us to do?
So it's not a policy document yet. It is, it is broad strokes, and so if you're comfortable with the content of the broad strokes, they'll take the next step to kind of flush it out, and, and you'll see that at a future meeting.
Perfect. Good. All right. Thank you. Okay, the next motion under sewer charges, to recommend the council approve first reading to amend the sewer charges bylaw to increase the base rate and effluent rate 10% effective on bills issued after July 1st, 2025, and increase an additional 4% on April 1st, 26 and 27. Okay. Counselor Cleveland, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Discussion? Go ahead, deputy.
I believe yesterday when we discussed this, we said that rates weren't raised since 2018, I believe.
Seventeen, eighteen.
Seventeen, eighteen? Yep. Thank you just for public knowledge.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carry. All right, so correspondence, the West Pubnico Golf Association request. Where are we on that, CAO? Is this a decision to be made now?
So it's an awkward, it's awkward timing, because we're, we're deep in our budget process and, and really hadn't allowed for this. There's a couple of things, I guess. If you've reviewed the request, it, it does include a, an amount for the town of Yarmouth, no amount for the district of Yarmouth, and an amount for the district of Argyle, so I, my opinion on this, if it matters?
What do you think?
Okay, thank you. My, my opinion on this is, is that the West Pubnico Golf Club, like the Yarmouth Golf Club, and like the Clara Golf Club, and like River Hills, are important infrastructure in our area, not just for recreation and health, but also for tourism, because golf is something that people sometimes travel and want, and want to do. The West Pubnico Golf Club needs, needs a fair amount of, of work, but, you know, compared to, to other facilities that, that are closer to home for us, the, the amounts are not, are not staggering or scary. I'm thinking about, you know, buildings that we, that we have and have looked at. I would recommend to you that in, in support of this, and I know the municipality of Argyle was very supportive and concerned about the golf club, I would think that it would be a, an appropriate gesture to make a contribution, and I'm thinking that maybe half of the amount that is identified in their request for the town of Yarmouth to be paid perhaps in next year's budget. So because we've done the budget, or, or, you know, could be considered again later this fiscal year if our capacity improves through, throughout the year, but I don't want to put additional pressure on our, our current budget consideration, but I do think it would be appropriate for council, if you wish, to, to signal support and pay it, pay it a bit later, and leave room in this, in this ask for the district of Yarmouth, because they're, they're absent in this, in this, this request.
Okay. So would the motion be to refer this to next year's budget, or to?
I, I, I would prefer, and again.
Say yes.
Prefer that you say yes, but here's the amount, and it will, will be coming in the 26, 27 fiscal year. So that allows them to plan and maybe execute this year if they can bridge finance your contribution.
Go ahead.
Okay, so at the risk of being controversial, I absolutely agree that all of these assets are important to the entire region, and we are always, as a council, looking regionally. I have a question, and maybe the answer is yes. Has municipality of Argyle supported the Yarmouth Golf and Country Club? As we know, the Yarmouth Golf and Country Club is doing a lot of expansion, and we have put money in. Are we aware that they have? Have they?
Curling asked, yeah.
So they have? Okay. If that's the case, then I will make the motion that we, that we support to the tune of, it's $10,000, right? The tune of half. And put it in next year's budget, yep.
Okay. Seconded, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Bell.
So they're a nonprofit organization, right? Would it be appropriate to direct them to our September Grants Program? Yeah, but it's, you know, if they, if they submitted a grant this year and a grant next year, that's $10,000, and it is within our, I mean, they are a nonprofit, they're providing a service, I guess, to some of the town residents. I'm wondering, in this, I don't, the West Pubnico Golf Club is contributing $25,000 to the cost, but are the membership being asked to contribute as well? Because the thing is that golf is something that is reserved for people, you know, I mean, not everybody plays golf. I can tell you right now, they don't have the money for the membership fees, or for the golf clubs, or for anything else. And we're asking every taxpayer in the town of Yarmouth to make a contribution, and I don't have a problem contributing, but I think that the membership should be contributing as well, the people who actually use the golf course. And I haven't seen that in this perspective, but it may be just that this is the $25,000 that, that the West Pubnico Golf Club is contributing. It may be from members. But I, I would hope that they would be soliciting help from their membership as well as from taxpayers, many of whom will never get to Pubnico and certainly never get to the golf club. So just a thought of how to, they could get money in September, potentially, through the Grants Program, that is a possibility. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. Thank you. The, the way I'm looking at this, I know it's from the golf club, but I guess I was looking at it as a, a really valuable piece of infrastructure within the municipality of Argyle, and I look at how, you know, the same question of, of things that happen in town, like, why are, why are people in Argyle supporting stuff that happens in town on a much, much bigger scale than what we're asking? So I know we don't do things based on, I don't want to say optics, we do, you know, the right thing for the right reason. But, but from my perspective, I guess this is, this is the right thing for the right reason. I know it's coming from a nonprofit, but I'm still feeling like it's, it's a piece of, of the municipality of Argyle that's tremendously important. So I guess that's where I was coming from. I'm, I'm fully in support. Go ahead.
Well, this may come as a surprise to you, but I probably will never use the track and field facility in Tuscan. Yeah. However, I was more than happy to support the contribution at the town of Yarmouth Wade, which was sizable to that facility. We, I think we have to be thinking regionally. I, I don't think we can stop things at the town border, and so I'm, I'm more than happy to support this because I'm, I'm not a golfer, and so I, in fact, I don't think I've ever been on the golf course in Pubnico, even to see it, but I'm very supportive of the fact that this is part of the recreational infrastructure in this county, and if they need it, and it looks like they do, in order to continue operations, then I would be more than happy to support it. And although I appreciate the, the idea of applying for a grant in the fall, and then again next year, that's not a, a guarantee that you're going to be selected or going to receive the funds that you need. And so I would prefer to accept the, the CAO's recommendation in regards to the, to the, the payments schedule.
Thank you. Counselor Lesser?
Yeah, I know they have contributed, Argyle House contributed to Yarmouth Golf Course. I think that's already been answered, but I, I don't think anybody at the table would be questioning this if we didn't just go through the budget process. So pushing it to next year's budget, but making a commitment is, like, it's a, it's a good compromise, because I left here yesterday thinking, I felt good about the budget, but I'm going to be very careful in voting yes on any money. And then the next day, we're looking at money, so it's, I think that's the only hesitation I'm assuming around the table is, we want to be cognizant of taxpayers' money, so I'll be voting in favor of it, because I like the proposal of moving it forward, so.
Deputy?
I'm not a golfer either, but very happy to support. My only question is, if we commit this $10,000, are they then eligible to apply for our September grants, or is this a, you're going to get your money down the road, you can't be coming double-dipping?
Well, if, I, I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a, a, it does, a disqualification here. But if, if council wants, if council, if the motion were to pass and goes through council, and you wanted it to be clear that you wouldn't expect to see an application through the Grants Process, then we can, we can include that in the notification as, just indicating that if this goes through, it, it goes through kind of an exceptional process to our normal Grants Process. Thank you.
Just for clarification, and maybe I'm dreaming, but did we not receive a similar request in recent weeks, in a much higher amount?
So there was some correspondence, and, and I went through it in an attempt to try to understand exactly what was presented, because it was put, presented in a way that wasn't quite as neat and clean as this request. And so it's a result of the, the questions that I asked, that they came back with a neater, tidier request, one that they're really, really ready to put forward. So I would say that they have other work they need to do. If you read the other one, you know, you saw a number of things, this is what I think they can manage this year.
Okay, any more questions? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carry. Request to present Mary Swetman, Service-Based Homelessness Count Report. I have a question, Natalie. So they're, so they're, so they're putting out the report and then we're having her come in?
I think the intent's just to present it to council.
Yeah, 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 but, but that's the, that's the order of it, right?
Correct.
You know what it looks like yet?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I wasn't clear whether we would receive the report in advance of the presentation.
I think that would be fair.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, my preference would be to have, to know what the report says before we have someone here to present it. Because without having knowledge in advance, it's difficult to formulate the questions that would be effective in, you know, in helping us understand how council has a role to play in whatever the report's findings are. So my preference would be to have the report before the presentation.
I can, I can, or Lindsay can relay that to the requister. I know that they're going to present it, like the tri-county data, because some of the sampling size, if it's below five, they can't report. But then there's specifics related to the town.
Yep.
So I think it's, it's a good way to, to look at it from a tri-county. And she has it for the whole province as well.
Okay, so I'll, you're absolutely right. I'd love to have that yesterday. And I'll tell you, because as soon as it comes out, I'm just going to, I'm just going to be. When the child poverty rate came out, my first call, after I ran to the bathroom and pounded on the walls, was to Ottawa to just say, what are you doing? Like, this is, this is not qualified. My second call was, was to the province and community services to say, come on. We know our child poverty rates are high, but the reason they were high was not qualified in that report, and that's not fair. Because, and I'll just say, like fishing, so much in, in this area, working under the table, there were half a dozen solid reasons to say, especially here, why that number is so high. So it wasn't, it was, it doesn't mean we don't have issues by any source of the imagination. But they were inflated for a number of reasons that are specific to us, and, and that was not qualified. So it really, that, it was like a punch in the face to be, because then, then, then I have to speak to that publicly and say, this is, this is why. And I have no, I have no problem doing that. I do have a problem doing it if it's not qualified. And I'm, and I'm sure this is, but I, I just hope it is. Gives me PTSD.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a really good presentation because this is the first time the tri-counties have been involved. They've been doing this for multiple years, every two years. And I think Dr. Swetman will give you a preamble as to the process. And it's, again, it's a, it's a time in count in the whole month of November. So are there opportunities for improvement? Like, they've, they've put a lot of that rationalization. So I think providing you with that upfront, but I think her speaking to it will give you a bit more information, but yeah.
It's important, it's really important to have her here.
Yeah, she will, yeah. I don't know if she's doing it virtually.
Or virtually, yeah.
Yeah.
Either way, so that we can ask as many questions as we need because we're going to be the ones that are going to have to speak to the community about this.
Yeah, I think also when you, so there's that one part, which is the report that she's going to present based on the research that they've done. But I think as a follow-up, if we get permission, it would be to share the waitlist with public housing. Because that plays a part in your understanding of where the situation is. It doesn't fall on the town, but it falls on other parties.
It, it does. And I think everyone at, at this table and you as well, you understand regardless of where it falls, we're the ones that answer to it. Because the public doesn't understand municipal, provincial, federal. It's, it's all, it's all, and I don't mind wearing, wearing fault. It's not our fault, but I don't mind wearing that and addressing that. We just want to be able to help, we just want to be able to help people get where they need to be. So it's, that's really important for us. So when somebody calls Counselor Cleveland, he can say, this is, this is whose mandate this is, and this is where you can go. And that's our, that's our part, right? I'm just, I had our MLA in the office today around another housing issue. And I said, we just, we, we need as, as a council and as a town, we really need to start, I don't want to say forcing the hand. We need to look after our mandate and have the information to pass on what else is, wherever else things can go, so that it can move at the right pace. So this is, I'm excited that she's going to do this. Yeah, so I'll, I'll work with Lindsay to get that. I just told her, can I have that report yesterday? We all would like to see it. Thanks, thanks Natalie.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So they're looking to come and present to council. It's your, your community. Are they making presentations to the province?
I can't answer that question, but I know in the past, they've provided the report in its final format to different levels of government as well as to municipalities.
Yeah, because I think one of the things, as, as the mayor says, we don't necessarily own this. And, you know, I, I note that the request has come through the provincial health administrator. And, you know, we've seen other requests come from provincial civil servants to come and present to council. And when, when it isn't necessarily clearly our mandate alone, then the question arises, are they, are they just looking, is this the province looking at us in some way? Or is this, you know, we're one of many that they're presenting to?
To my knowledge, they're doing a presentation to town council. There was a choice meeting this past Thursday I couldn't attend. But the feedback is that unless the other municipalities ask for a presentation, they're just providing the report. That's just an update I got this morning. The intention of the presentation is not to activate any responsibility at the municipal level, but awareness of what's happening. And if municipalities can champion with other levels of government to ask the question, how is the gap going to be closed? This is the waitlist. I think it's really to, to ask you to be champions, not to be the holder of carrying out the actions necessarily.
Okay. So we can get those answers when, maybe when Lindsay reaches out and, and ask those questions of, of this presenter. The other question I'd like to ask council, we usually limit and always go over our limit of 10 minutes. Like, I'm sitting here thinking, I've got a half hour worth of questions myself. How do we, how do we do this?
So if, you know, if the presentation can be kept within 10 minutes, you know, if the information can be conveyed effectively in 10 minutes, that would be great. But you don't have to restrain yourselves in terms of the questions and, and, you know, where you go with it. I mean, I think if you're engaged and, and, and your minds are, your wheels are turning and you have questions, I think that's exactly what they want. And that's, you know, it's your meeting. So if you want to spend an hour asking questions and engaging. But I think the idea of keeping presentations short is that it is your meeting and you do have decisions to make. And so depending on the length of the agenda, you know, get into 20-minute, 30-minute presentations, you, you can be exhausted by the time you get to your own business. You know, so, so putting some parameters around it, that was kind of the intent. But it is not intended in any way to restrain your ability to dig into the issue and, and go where you want with it.
All right. Does that sound good, folks? Yeah, okay. Excellent. What's that? Oh, definitely. Yep, motion to present at a future meeting. How fast can we get them? Oh, go ahead.
Future committee, a whole meeting or a future council meeting?
Meeting the whole. Who's second in that? Oh, Counselor Lesser. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, can we have a motion to go in camera? Should we do that right now? Okay, so I'm going to adjourn this. Hang on. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Deputy.